Howie.
Here.
Johnson.
We're here to discuss and take up local law, amendment of twenty twenty four's local law, amendment chapter twenty four, claims against the city. With the code, the city all in relation to the requirement for prior written notice of an alleged defect, we're trying to get C Click Fix back on. So with that, since, and thank you, Ms. Farrell and Ms. Zama for working on this and our staff for moving us right along. I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Farrell, if you'd say a few words.
Yeah, first and foremost, huge thanks to everyone for coming tonight. We will make this as brief as possible and also thank you to the mayor, court council, specifically Brett Williams and David Gallin, along with Jake Geisling and our staff for figuring out a fix where we can hopefully in the very near future, we're hoping by the end of the week, turn C Click Fix back on. We still need to do a mayoral hearing, which we're hoping to have at the end of the week because obviously local laws, we have some hoops to jump through with good reason. We are a deliberative body and it's important that we operate as transparently as possible so that hearing will be likely at the end of the week. Please keep, I'm letting the public know to keep your eyes peeled for it because once that is moved forward, we'll be able to turn C Click Fix back on. I think everyone knows that C Click Fix is a very important reporting mechanism and it's not just a reporting mechanism for potholes and street issues and sidewalks. It's also for code violations. My constituents also use it for non-emergency police things and it turns out the water department also uses it a great deal for leaks and potential issues and utilizing C Click Fix has helped them be a lot more efficient when it comes to water main breaks. So just huge thanks to everybody for coming together and figuring out a fix in light of the court decision. And we do have obviously Brett Williams and the mayor here and I would love to invite anyone to come up and just say a few words, maybe answer a few questions about, I know some councilmembers had some questions about exactly what happened and how this fixes it.
Thank you so much and I want to echo Councilmember Farrell's appreciation and gratitude for all of you coming in for this emergency meeting and for taking the notice of necessity that I provided and moving forward with the meeting. I also want to thank the staff. I know that this is a really challenging time of year for all of you to be here, so I will be brief. I want to start by first saying that C Click Fix was an innovation that we adopted in order for our residents to be able to share with us what they were seeing and have an opportunity to provide a complaint without trying to reach somebody by phone. You know, there are many challenges and I think in the world that we live in today, people have their phones and they like to be able to pull them out and report when they're seeing something that the city needs to be made aware of. We have evolved it into a tool that we use to measure how quickly we respond to various complaints and we have a lot of data and as I always say, we will never state claim to perfection, but we use that data to ensure that we are working with our departments to determine what the barriers are to them being able to respond more quickly, whether they need additional personnel, whether we need additional equipment, what is it that we need to do to make sure that we're meeting expectations of our residents? And so we work to be transparent about C Click Fix and it provides us with that transparency, the good, the bad, and the ugly. So from time to time, I'm not pleased with where we are with C Click Fix. So I will never say that this is a way for us to be perfect, but it allows us to really look at where our resources are being deployed and what we would need to do to deploy those resources more quickly to respond to citizen complaints. It was never intended that C Click Fix would replace prior written notice. And with prior written notice, what attaches is legal liability, actual dollars that the city would have to play pay if there is prior written notice of a particular condition. And so we put a disclaimer on C Click Fix. There had been some case law that made us comfortable that C Click Fix would not be construed as prior written notice for the purpose of tort liability attaching to the city and we were ultimately challenged on that and we took that all the way to the Court of Appeals and the Court of Appeals had a different view of what the prior written notice provision of our particular local law would allow as prior written notice. And so this is something, as you know, the New York Conference of Mayors joined us in this, in our position on this brief, they had encouraged the Court of Appeals not to consider C Click Fix as prior written notice for purposes of tort liability attaching and the Court of Appeals has spoken. Thus, we now need to make very specific in our local law what prior written notice is for purposes of our taxpayers being exposed to damages and tort liability. And so that is what we are asking you to do. We want to make it clear so that we can continue to use C Click Fix as a mode of allowing our constituents to communicate with us and allowing us to measure what it is and how it is that we are responding to various complaints. So that is why we are where we are today and again, I want to thank all of you for your time. I'm happy to answer any question.
Mr. Howie. Thank you and thank you, Mayor, for coming and talking to us. I will be supporting this. I think it's important. I do have a fast question though. If there is instances where on C Click Fix something's closed out and it's really not closed out, as council members, we get the calls, who should we go to? That's something I've never been clear on and I appreciate it.
So one of the things that we discovered is that C Click Fix sat at the Department of General Services, but many of the complaints weren't complaints that involve the Department of General Services. That's why with your support and with the focus of each and every one of you on being responsive to constituents, we created the Department of Community and Neighborhood Services. And so Community and Neighborhood Services now is where C Click Fix is housed and it would be your neighborhood service, constituent service individual who you would follow up with on that.
Thank you.
Mr. Adams. Thank you, Mayor, for joining us. I do, do want clarification on how prior written notice is handled, when received, whether it's going to the commissioners or what is the procedure as to?
Well, one of the things that we discovered as part of this litigation was that we could use clarity and ultimately what this, the amendment to the local law does is it creates a very clear, direct location where prior written notice has to be filed and that's with our Corporation Counsel's Office so that our Corporation Counsel can then follow up with whichever department would be responsible for the condition that is reported and immediately make sure that they understand the legal liability that attaches and what we need to do to address that particular condition. And so this clarifies not only what prior written notice is, but it directs that prior written notice directly to our Corporation Counsel's Office, which again, given the complexity of the city and the various departments, oftentimes people don't know whether it really is a water issue, it's a DGS issue, is this a codes issue? So being able to clarify that and have Corporation Counsel immediately address that, I think is the, is again, an opportunity that was identified as part of the situation.
Just to add to that, part of the question is trying to get understanding like does, prior to this change, the prior written notices that were received, were they being held on record somewhere, being stored somewhere, how long they're being stored for, for us to have a record of receiving these?
I mean, I would defer to Corporation Counsel's Office on that. I think that's one of the areas where our, our process in the past was not always clear. I think that to a civilian, you know, whether that be a director of a department or even a commissioner, truly appreciating what prior written notice is, which has the legal ramifications to it, probably was not always fully appreciated, but we do, when, when the city receives prior written notice, we do maintain records of that.
Yes, that's correct. In the past, when prior written notice was properly given to the Commissioner of General Services, that office had a system to maintain those prior written notice records. I'm not sure exactly how long they're maintained for, but of course, in all legal proceedings, there are statutory notifications after, proceedings would be, you can't legally bring a proceeding after statutory notifications anyway, I'm not sure those records are maintained at least that high. And there are, there are standards that all the city government has to provide by maintaining those records. So I'm pretty confident that we have them.
Final question. So with the legislation that we have here, you mentioned the language prior being kind of used and now it's focused on the procedures of where things are being directed to. The question is, do you believe now the language that we have and we're looking at addresses those liability concerns and defenses from having future issues like this?
All indications from the Court of Appeals decision is that it is up to the municipality to determine the definition of prior written notice, but they did not feel comfortable that prior written notice, if that's, if you just simply define it as prior written notice with no other further descriptors, that putting something into an app is written and it's notice. And so we are clarifying that prior written notice for purposes of damages liability attaching needs to be in writing, either delivered by hand, by US mail, or by certified mail to our Corporation Counsel.
Mr. Flynn, Ms. Farrell.
No, a quick question. Was there any talk about the Neighborhood Engagement Unit getting notifications around the Corporation Counsel since they're the ones that handle it first?
I think given the legal liability that applies, that attaches, that our Corporation Counsel's Office should be the one that receives it. I think again, communicating to the various department that might be responsible, like it might be the recreation department who's responsible for maintaining a certain piece of playground equipment if that's damaged. So making sure that he's getting to the department and that they understand the legal liability that attaches and the urgency around being able to remediate that condition.
Ms. Farrell.
And I, I just wanted to clarify for people, because people didn't pick it up on the legislation. Currently, where that written notice is supposed to go is to the Department of General Services, which to the mayor's point and to Brett's as well, it does make the most sense for a liability document to go to Court Counsel's Office and for them to maintain it so that now in the future, if there are court cases based on that notice, they'll know exactly where it is, they can have access to it. And it's not that that wasn't done before with Department of General Services, it's just, it makes a lot more sense to keep things in one place. And I, I will say there have been broader questions in terms of accessibility, things like that. We will continue talking through if this makes the most sense, if there potentially should be any amendments, things like that, we will continue to work with Court Counsel's Office and obviously with our own counsel to see if there are amendments that make sense. And I also would note, I'm sure that a lot of people have had outreach from their constituents. It is, we have all, I think everyone gets frustrated sometimes by the state of our roads. We live in the Northeast, it's not an easy thing to do. We are all frustrated by road traffic, things like that. I, I know that I've gotten outreach with a desire to have a broader conversation on that and I think that it makes a lot of sense for us to do that as we move forward because we want to make sure that we are doing the best we possibly can. We also want to make sure that our streets are as safe as possible and any way that we can support the administration and Department of General Services in keeping our roads as safe as they can possibly be is something we all obviously want to do. So I just wanted to note that as well, that we will take an opportunity to make sure that this makes the most sense to protect the city, but also to allow people that, we want to make sure that people are having their voices heard as well. Thank you.
Ms. Baller and Ms. Frederick and then we'll finish out with Mr. Adams.
Thank you, Ms. President. So starting on, thank you, Mayor, and thank my colleagues and corporate council to work on this and try and get this back up and running as quickly as possible, something that I know residents need and are the way to try to get information out and to be addressed as quickly as possible. As we continue to work on this in the future, and that's just in the Corporation Counsel, we can get it from the sidelines on, but having an additional format that's digital for people to be able to submit. I, I know it's already, right now, currently, we're going to work on today and looking at past today, hopefully past today, so that people can get back up and running. It's all manual, old school papers. I like old school papers. I like it myself, but I know a lot of people are more traditional and I think having an email address, if people can go to the back to get these types of forms somewhere, people can send an email to, to Corporation Counsel, you know, adding that on in the future is something I hope we can talk about as we move forward. But thank you again for your work today.
Ms. Frederick.
Thank you, Mayor, for joining us this evening and the information that you've shared. Our immediate need is, with this emergency meeting, is to reinstate C Click Fix, given that it's such an incredible tool to our city residents. My question is, you had mentioned the disclaimer in the app with the anticipated reinstatement of the app pending a successful passage this evening and then the public hearing. Are there any immediate additional changes we're making to the app to further disclaim and make sure we're not getting the wrong impression to residents?
I think number one, our goal is to have information about how they can file a notice, a prior written notice, so the information, assuming that this local law passes. And then I think that the second thing that we do need to stress is that if it's a true emergency, then people need to either call nine one one, call the non-emergency police number. Somebody mentioned the water department utilizing this to respond to water main breaks? Yes, except it is not monitored twenty-four seven. C Click Fix is an app and when people are out and about and if it's two o'clock in the morning and they see a water main break and they take a picture of it and they put it in C Click Fix, that's not going to be seen. So we want to make sure that they know that if it's an emergency situation, like you see water gushing out of the ground or a sinkhole that forms, that calling four three four city will always get through to somebody. It is an answering service, there is somebody who can actually contact them, those who are working on a night shift to actually go out at a minimum cone off that, that hazard so that we can address that situation. So I think that that's also a misconception that maybe folks have and we need to ensure that we're addressing that right up front. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. I sat in the seat for seven years and listened to you praise C Click Fix and in those praises, I also received countless calls of people complaining about watching C Click Fix and issues not get addressed. God bless the person who appealed the local court decision because if a resident is negligent in the city, the city holds the resident accountable. And countless times, people have called about receiving flat tires through the potholes and I think that what I would have been looking to hear from you is that we're going to step up the process because if we can tout it for seven years saying it's a great mechanism to, for people to be able to communicate, one of the things that I know, there's a lot of the people that I represent aren't going to write a letter to the mayor's office nor are they going to write a letter to DGS. And so in a time when we're using technology to the best of, of its use, I think that we should never take the position that we're protecting the residents from the city because if we do what we're supposed to do, which my first resolution of this cycle was local law A, which addressed the complaints that I received day in and day out about the lack of the commissioners addressing this stuff. I won't be supporting this tonight because I don't think that it's fair that our residents get something that's taken away from them because of accountability. What I have been speaking in this chamber about is the lack of accountability by department heads and as well as the mayor's office. And the first time that we see accountability, the first thing that happens is we're not going to use this anymore. The, this city, the streets in this city are dangerous and in our, in the lower wards, there, there are more complaints. Now, over the course of time, these complaints have drifted to the higher wards, which they weren't often. You didn't hear the complaints as much as you do in the lower wards. So I, I think that for us to call an emergency meeting to protect the city, residents that have been drying out for years, you know, I believe part of this problem you inherited, but since you inherited, it's gotten worse. So I won't be supporting this and I'm asking if we have a more transparent approach because C Click Fix is definitely a benefit to the whole city and although it's liability attached to it, that should give you more motivation to address these issues immediately. And when you said there's no one watching C Click Fix twenty-four hours a day, I think that we didn't feel that way in the first ten years or however long you've been utilizing C Click Fix.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you for being here, Mayor. Thank you for, all of us for being here and for the conversation. I just want to be clear about what this is. This isn't whether C Click Fix is operating perfectly, whether there needs to be some changes and there needs to be improvements. I think everybody, including the mayor, admitted that. The reason that there is this urgency and why we're meeting tonight is because we don't want this portal, this communication mechanism for our public to be shut off based on a technicality. We're talking about a part of our city code that was written in nineteen eighty-four. Before, there was the digital means of communication that we have now. So it makes sense to tweak that and then, and bring this back online, which I don't know about you, but for me and not only my constituents, but residents in other wards too, who have made it very clear that they, it's unacceptable for C Click Fix to be offline. So that's why we're here, we're getting it back, to, to let it go and, and say because we think it's not working perfectly, that we don't want to turn it back on and then work to improve it. That doesn't make sense to me at all. So I do hope that my colleagues support this technical change in our city code that's long overdue, that brings it more into our modern world and allows our public to be able to communicate issues that they're having without exposing the entire, all of the residents of Albany to legal liability for every single issue or comment that's posted on the app. Well, I'd just like to say that thanks to this council and previous councils, we have spent more money on roads than any prior administration. We have paved more roads than any prior administration and we respond as quickly as possible as we can to potholes. We live in the Northeast. I'm not really aware of any city in the Northeast or in many other climates that do not struggle with road conditions that result in challenges for our residents. The, the weather conditions also impact how we can repair those. So when it's cold and the, the asphalt plant is closed, we can only do certain types of patches and we all know that those patches don't last forever. This is the reality of living in the Northeast. But we have the data, we can tell you how quickly we respond and if this council doesn't believe that we respond quickly enough, we can talk about what resources we would need in order to be able to respond faster. But the, but the bottom line is we can't, you know, out physics physics. And so even if we're responding quickly, in the cold months of the winter, we are responding with patches that by definition, when the next bus or truck drive over that spot, it is going to result in a new pothole. So I'm proud of the hard work that our crews do and I am always open to talking about what it is that we would need, what resource we would need for a response time to be faster. And that's how we work together to address the challenges and ensure that we're looking at this holistically across the city.
Ms. Ramiro, Ms. Keegan.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, for coming unexpectedly on this emergency meeting. I second Councilmember Baller's point about accessibility and Councilmember Farrell's point about accessibility and the possibility of modifying this for an email, possibility to allow for more folks to provide prior written notice in email format. I think that kind of goes towards Councilmember Johnson's point about allowing for people to notify the city of issues and allow for more accessibility in that way. Neighborhood Services does a really great job of working with the resources that they have, at least in my neighborhood. Our neighborhood engagement person is very, very, very responsive and has a really wonderful relationship with our neighborhood. I look forward to working with you next year and getting as many resources as we can into the city to maybe address some of those gaps or, you know, use any grants or resources we can to funnel as much as we can into the city to address potholes, sidewalks, anything else we can. But this is a great step forward. It's something that I will be voting yes on and I hope we can impact this tonight to get C Click Fix back on board. It's a very important transparency measure within our city that people can report important things for.
And I want to thank you because you thought you had attended your last council meeting. So thank you very much for coming in and congratulations, best wishes.
Ms. Keegan.
I just wanted to also note how useful I find C Click Fix for myself in terms of being able to monitor what's happening in my district. It's an app that I receive regular notifications from, I review those notifications every few days, I pay attention to the ones that we get a lot of comments on and it does help with my communication between various departments around the timeframes in which things might get addressed and what may be causing delays in addressing issues that routinely come up on the application. And, and as you've noted, certain things, for example, the water department and cost savings measures has started doing its caching in one, in one go. savings measures has started doing its patching in one, in one go as it's completed work in a larger geographic area instead of just patching one street at a time. And being able to see those reports and be able to speak with commissioners about what's going on and then communicate back to the district has been incredibly helpful. So I'm really looking forward to being able to have the application back online because in my opinion, it helps me better serve the community that I represent.
Thank you. Mr. Adams, and then we're finished.
Thank you. I just wanted to kind of circle back and try to get a little bit more clarification on the policy procedures of things real quick. So can you either speak to our act of threat as to when prior written notice is received? Again, if it's being stored, but is that, is it also being digitized? Is it being put into the computer and stored on a file somewhere? That was the first question. Just a big clarification.
I can't speak to that exactly. And again, that, that is under the original law. Notice that you're referring to is under the original law. We'll have to come up with our own procedures for storage of notices.
And Corporation Council's office has recently adopted a new digitization for our contracts. So if that's something that you desire us to do, I mean, certainly we need to digitize it. I will tell you that, so if we receive prior written notice in the form of a letter of a dangerous condition, that information is then put into C Click Fix and it is also communicated directly to the department responsible. So let me give you an example, right? A piece of playground equipment breaks and there's a dangerous condition, right? There's something sharp that's sticking out and somebody provides us with written notice of that. We're going to go out, the department, the Department of Recreation is going to go out, they're going to do whatever it is that they need to do to abate the immediate danger. They may or may not be able to repair a piece of equipment. It might take us six months to repair that piece of equipment if the piece that's needed is on back order, if we can't, you know, obtain it from another source. So there's a, you know, there, there is a reason behind the length of time it might take to address a particular condition, but the first order of business is to make sure that that condition no longer presents a danger.
So I understand that point and that kind of goes to the point as to during this long-term phase where something may be getting addressed, if the person who sent in the written notice wants to follow up and make sure that they have received of their notice.
It would go into, it would go into C Click Fix.
And so the final question is just, can you explain as to the legislation? You clarified the new procedure as to make sure that it was mailed written and all that stuff. Is there a reason why you left out the email or that process?
So again, this is the difference between filing a complaint and saying, hey, there's something wrong here and having actual monetary damages potentially, it's monetary exposure to the city and by extension, our constituents and our taxpayers with respect to that condition. Municipalities are different than individuals. By law, we are treated differently with respect to notice of a condition that would lead to money damages. And again, that is for policy reasons. If you don't like the policy, you can talk to your newest assembly member. But these, these attach to protect taxpayers from having to pay significant damages and have tort liability associated with it. That's the distinction. It's not that we don't want to fix it, it's that we want to ensure that we're not overexposing our residents to monetary damages associated with a particular condition. And we have that right under state law.
Just final remark because again, from the court hearing and the case and their conversations into Councilmember Johnson's point, the system does allow for certain communities to feel disenfranchised and things getting addressed, but also being able to have the ability to now follow this process and learn how to get things addressed within a new manner. So I'm hoping we continue to approve this, but I think, you know, this is something that we should make sure that there's clarity on and people are aware of.
And, and, you know, to your point, C Click Fix can be broken down by ward. And if we are not responding quickly enough in a particular area of the city, I want to know about it. I want to ensure that we're responding in a way that empowers people and engages people and ensures that they feel enfranchised, not disenfranchised.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So I would say I will be supporting this. In the end, it's our taxpayers that, when that bill comes in for the lawsuit, it's, it may be that person that ran over the pothole that has the damage deal for that, you know, it's taxpayers' funding dollars that pay those lawsuits and pay for repairs to people's property. So I will be supporting this and I hope other members will too. Mr. Johnson.
So I just want to say in response to us emphasizing on the city, when the residents incur injuries to their cars, to their properties, that they have to pay for that. So they're paying a double. And I think that I'm not saying that I don't want C Click Fix not to be reinstated. I just don't think that it's fair to, you know, we attack the liability on the court because without accountability, just the sense of urgency. And, you know, I've said it before many times, lawsuits are common because they've, you know, we're using that, the threat of lawsuit to get some of these regulations passed. Why not, why don't you think that in response to people, how long do you think people are going to sit back and say, well, you know, I'm not going to go that way? And so I, I would love to have a real conversation and not this wordsmithing of things where people just overtalk and act like they're, you know, they, they know better than others. Because one, one thing that I do know is people have been experiencing flat tires coming off a 70, coming off a 90 at Livingston Ave. I hear about that for years. And if there, if you come to a situation where they can't fix something, there should be some, some type of actit instead of letting the road continue as it is and people's cars or, or property keep getting damaged. So I'm all for a better solution, but I don't think that this is the right solution because one person was successful in their argument about the city being responsible for what happened to their, you know, this is a New Jersey accent and I just can't support it. So I wanted to get on record again because we keep on saying protecting the city, but we're not talking about the, the problems that our residents are facing, especially during times like this, that it's the holiday season. And if a person got a flat tire and, and doesn't have the means for it, back, back and forth of disarray on someone's family in their household, that they, they starting the new year out behind. So thank you.
Can I just clarify that this individual involved in the lawsuit, all that this does is now it sends it back to trial court. That individual has not proven that the dangerous condition was the cause of the accident. And that is the case that we're very, that we're talking about. Sometimes people exceed the speed limit and they hit a pothole and they get a flat tire. Sometimes people get a flat tire and they blame a pothole that was not there. This is all, this is what happens in litigation and it is why we are asking for this prior notice so that we don't have to hire 10 more lawyers to spend all of their time in court determining these issues of fact, because there are still issues of fact associated with every single one of these scenarios for determining whether our taxpayer dollars are spent to settle with them.
One additional point I'd just like to remind everyone of, all this legislation does is restore things to the way they were before the Court of Appeals decision. For as long as we've had C Click Fix, the city and all of our litigation, we've always treated C Click Fix as not constituted prior written notice. It's just going to put it back to the way it was before. And the other point I wanted to make is councilmembers talking about, you know, accessibility and email and, you know, call-in defects. Everybody still has the ability to do that. If the council legislation has passed that, then C Click Fix to make the city aware of some defects. You can email the city in its various departments to make more of defects. You can call the city. This just relates strictly to the city's liability for injuries and damages caused by the two things. Remind everyone that everybody still has the ability to make the city aware of some defects.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes.
I think that's what parts of the issue is, citizens not realizing what, when you report to the city, most people think once you report to the city, the city's liable or something like that. And now with C Click Fix, people believe that they didn't get fixed, they didn't get fixed, the city is liable. And I guess that's why people want it on. I think that's why certain people look at it as, well, if the city is changing, that means they're staying in a hive of nothing. But I think for our residents in this 2024, and this is for the council, if it's state law that doesn't allow sending email as a cinch on liability, I think that is something that we need to support. It shouldn't just be, in this technology, you know, technology that we have at our disposal should just be a certified letter mailed to a corporation council. And I think that's where people will be looking at technology. Are we using technology for, for events? But we still have to do a wholesale certified letter to a department to make it the city liable. But unfortunately, a lot of citizens believe just putting in C, putting in C Click Fix makes the city liable to damage or something happen. So we're covering that. But I think that's where we have to look at it as legislators. Should it be just a certified letter? And I believe that's probably state law that I'm thinking about, not the city. I don't know that, but it sounded like that's where there's a role in this state of that.
Just to make one small clarification on that, it doesn't have to be certified mail. It can also be hand-delivered to Corporation Council's office. It can also be sent by first-class mail, so it's a regular old stamp on my board. Just wanted to make that clarification.
Thank you. Mr. Balleran, and then we're, you and Mr. President.
Thank you, and I'll be quick. I do hope that if that's a state law, we need to adjust it so that it has a digital format where people can submit a written notice in a traditional manner. I hope the state makes that adjustment. I think, you know, times have changed and we need to move forward with the technology that we have. And with that said, I will be supporting this. I think it's, C Click Fix was never made or designed to be prior written notice. It was designed to address issues in our community as quickly as possible. And I'd like to see that tool back up and running while residents use it as quickly as possible. And as far as getting traditional manner, we'll push our state elected officials to get that law changed so we can get that added into our, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Balleran. And since you already called the roll call, please join me in the pledging allegiance in a moment of silence. Should have called the order. The special meeting Monday, December 23, 2024. Well, now we will have public comment, period, on this specific local law. You have five minutes to speak upon this specific local law. It will, please state your name and address for the record. Green means go. When it turns yellow, that means you have one minute remaining and red means complete your comments. That being said, can the clerk call the first speaker?
Jesse Summer. My name is Jesse Summer. I live at 289 Lark Street, Albany, New York, 12210. I just want to very quickly say that I appreciate Councilmember Johnson's words entirely. It's why I'm here. Some of what I'm going to say is somewhat reflective of what he's already said, but the important piece right now is that the Court of Appeals has already said what prior written notice is. They've clarified that. C Click Fix is prior written notice. And the law that you're passing today, that you intend to pass today, serves solely to make it more difficult for people to submit notice of issues. It's not an email. I don't need a separate email. I need C Click Fix and I need C Click Fix to then direct that notification to your office, sir. This is, this is not rocket science. I fully understand that the mayor's office has no choice. They have to take a posture right now of protecting the taxpayer. I, I understand that it's clearly blindsided city. But now that we know that C Click Fix is prior written notice, what's the problem? Why are we here? Why did this require anyone to come out at 5:30? There, there is, the issue has been solved. I do not want to be in a situation where I have to hand-deliver a letter detailing a problem, whether it's a pothole or whether it's my own inane mentally unstable ramblings. That is for your office to differentiate between and then figure out what are we going to do to properly resource the remediation. We've got a 25 mile per hour speed limit now. We've got red light cameras everywhere. We've got speed cameras. I know that I personally, just as I've kind of emotionally come to accept where we are in this new environment where I'm getting speeding tickets in the mail every couple weeks and trust me, it has changed my behavior, so that's interesting, but I know that I'm personally able to finance some of the response to whatever these issues may be. I understand further that we are in the Northeast and that there will be times we can't remediate these problems quickly. How is that any different than a prior written notice that someone takes the discipline to go and hand-deliver? I could make an app in my room right now. I could develop an app that automatically prints out the exact same type of response that you get on C Click Fix and I could charge someone 10 cents and I'll hand-deliver the notice to the city. The only thing that's, that has happened as a result of that is that I now am the one who's bearing the burden of the extra difficulty this amendment would impose on the citizens. So I don't need this body, speaking personally, I don't need this body to protect the taxpayer from accountability, right? I don't need the, this body to pass an amendment that protects the taxpayer from taking the hit because there's been the lawsuit that ultimately results in there being a judgment against the city. I need the city to protect the taxpayer by promptly responding to issues that it gets on C Click Fix. Or not, or not promptly responding. And if you don't promptly respond, then just be aware, the city has been put on notice, proper notice, due notice. Now, as you can imagine, I, you know, I have had interactions with Corporation Council in the past and I'm sure that it was entirely warranted that your predecessor indicated that she would block the email story. Totally get it, probably the right call. But nonetheless, that happened. I don't want this to be a single point of failure. I think what we should do potentially is if this has to be passed tonight, because this is the only way that we can give the mayor's office the, the sense of comfort to restore C Click Fix, then fine, pass it. But with the understanding that you're having another emergency meeting in a week to figure out how we're making it so that there is not one additional step placed on the constituent to submit a problem to the city. And I appreciate what everyone's doing. I understand why we're here. I understand that everyone has shown up at 5:30 tonight so that we can get C Click Fix back and running. The issue isn't C Click Fix. The issue is what constitutes prior written notice and how do we keep it just as easy for people? for people to submit complaints where there's actually going to be the urgency placed on the city to respond to issues? And if the city doesn't have the capability of responding to issues, then it should say that transparently as opposed to saying, well, you need to go through this rigmarole of placing a stamp on an envelope.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, sir. The court please call next speaker, Charles Robinson.
Charles Robinson, lifelong resident of Albany County, New York, sixty-four years old. My question is to everybody that said they will be supporting this. Are you supporting it or your constituents, your constituents supporting it? Y'all all got voted into this chamber by, by people like me, but yet know y'all come through this, come down to this chamber and y'all constantly vote like you, like somebody interviewed you for this job. The mayor did not interview you for this job. The people voted each and every one of y'all in this office, and year, and year after year, I came down here and watched y'all vote in favor of government, not in favor of constituents, not in favor of taxpayers. The only thing y'all insured from this body is ensuring that it was taxation without representation. That's the only thing I ever experienced on my life journey at sixty-four years old from this administration, administration that constantly, constantly plotted behind my back to stop me from actually existing in this community. But guess what? I'm still stoned, and I don't call nobody boss, and I don't depend on nobody to feed me. As a matter of fact, the tax payment that I just sent to the state that they funnel down to the city, I want to track, because I'm tired of living my life being taxed, taxation without representation. That's the only thing I ever experienced, is taxation with, you want to take my money that's in my pocket and do what you want to do, do with it. Yo, listen, all fifteen of y'all got voted in this, in, in this, in this body by constituents. Are you making the vote or are your constituents making the vote? Are you making the vote or are your constituents making the vote? Are you voting for this administration or are you voting for your constituents? Because I'm very rarely seen in the whole, in this, the whole time that y'all been down here, I never seen a favorable vote toward the constituents, the same people that voted you in, into your seat. I see year after year, year after year, people coming down here acting like they got interviewed for this job. Fifteen common council members, y'all supposed to ensure countable accountability for the poor man, for the person that you asked, that you taxing. It's constantly, it's taxation without representation. Our, our opinion don't count anymore? It never counted. I've never seen it count in my life journey at sixty-four years old. I had to buy into this matrix in order to keep my sanity. I could buy into this matrix. When you make this vote, please think about the people who you represented, who voted you into your seat. You don't have no boss? You didn't interview for this job? You're supposed to be your own person. You're supposed to represent the people who voted you in here, and you constantly came down here and passed laws and ordinance to defeat and find the people into poverty. You wonder why so many people can't make it, so many people are homeless right now? It's because of the laws and ordinance y'all passed. Building Department stopped work orders. How do I feed my kids if I can't work? How can I feed my kids if I, if I can't work? I'm asking you just understand that you got voted into your position by taxpayer citizens. Are you representing them or are you representing this administration? Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Thomas Moore. I live at forty-eight Darby Street in the City of Albany, and, uh, I come here as one of these citizens, and also I am the leader of my neighborhood group called White Wall Road Neighborhood Connection. Uh, see click fix, I am a total favor of reinstating see click fix tonight, totally. Um, as an individual, I have used it. It has worked very, very well for me, uh, with like lawn repair even from the city, uh, sidewalk repair, great repair on the sores. Um, I know in my, um, my group, White Wall Road Neighborhood Connection, um, a lot of my constituents have used it, and if they don't know how to use it, they've called me and they say, hey, Tom, how do we do this? Let's, let's get the word out, this needs to be repaired. Um, a while ago, someone fell, I know, down my neighborhood, and I put a see click fix in. In a fair amount of time, and I'm not complaining about any of those, uh, times that I do see click fix, it was always done in a fair amount of time. So let's make that clear. Um, the street was repaired, okay? There was another time a tree branch fell, which, uh, down by the school, which created a hazard for the kids. I called within a fair amount of time. It worked. It was fixed, okay? Um, sidewalk repair, garbage removal has worked. We've used it. We've used it for lawn maintenance, um, bag pickups and all of that. Um, so see click fix works. It's a national thing, right? Every, every, I think every city in the United States has some form of it or another. Um, and we're lucky to have it, and we should look forward to keeping it, okay? Is it, is it perfect? Probably not. Um, these were written, I heard someone say nineteen eighty-three, that's over forty years ago, for these laws or something. Uh, we should amend see click fix for this, for the City of Albany and, and make sure that what has just happened, this hiccup that we had where the Court of Appeals ruled, doesn't happen again, because if the city is liable, each and every one of us in this room is liable, we take the hit on it by our tax dollars, okay? So, um, like I said, I'm in favor of reinstating see click fix. I know how to use it, and I've been teaching a lot of people in my group how to use it. I reach out to my neighborhood specialist, and I send her an email. She gets right back to me, and like I said, within a fair amount of time, it doesn't happen the next day or the next hour or whatever, all right? Right now, probably the city is strapped, and probably they are under staff just like everybody else is, okay? So we have to take that into consideration. Um, but within a fair amount of time, to all the reports that I've made and my constituents at my White Wall group, okay, it has been addressed. Uh, one of the most important ones was the, like the mayor was just talking about, was the playground equipment. It was broken. It was, it was a hazard to kids, which is not cool at all. So, uh, we went down there and caution taped it, and of course, you know, we had to caution tape it again and all, everything like that. But within a fair amount of time, the city came by, they repaired the, uh, the playground equipment, they even, um, installed a new picnic bench, which by somehow got overturned and destroyed. But we have all new picnic benches and all that and stuff like that. So see click fix, from my personal experience as an individual and as a group leader, see click fix works. So I say, let's all put our heads together and amend this, and let's get it back online as soon as we can, because it is a valuable tool to the citizens here in Albany. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And that's all we have signed up for. Commentary, commentary, close, communication from the mayor. I don't know, two other communications. Good. All right. Consideration of local law. Please, Mr. Kimbrough. Moving on to consideration of local law.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. Farrell, go ahead.
I noticed local law M of two thousand and twenty-four and asked for its instruction and passage.
And the clerk three three, the local law.
A local law amended chapter twenty-four claims against the city of the code of the City of Albany in relation to the requirements for prior written notice of an alleged defect.
Discussion on this local law, Ms. Farrell.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I again just wanted to thank everyone for coming and for being here, and just a reminder that the purpose of see click fix itself is a way for our residents and actually people that live outside the city as well, anybody with the app can then notice and easily notice things so that that information gets to the different departments that they're able to act on it. Um, I would again note, as the mayor said, it is not, should not be used in an emergency situation, either calling nine one one if that's appropriate or five one eight or three four city if it's after hours. Everybody should do that no matter what is going on with see click fix. Um, however, our goal is to have that turned back on, and that is why we're here tonight. See click fix was never created as a legal notice, and there is a difference between letting, um, some, like letting the parks department know about broken playground equipment and having that fixed and notice that, or even I've had it used for a neighbor with grass that's too long or so many other things, hedges that need to be trimmed. There's a difference between that and legal notice in terms of liability, and those should be treated differently, because I could go on see click fix when it was still on and notice that a dinosaur is coming to eat my house. There is absolutely no guidelines, no standards on see click fix, because it is there to accept information. However, people give it to us, and sometimes people notice something because they want to report it, and they don't give a ton of information with it. That should not be considered legal liability, and that is the difference between the things. As I said, um, I, I think that we do need to come back and ensure that there are other methods of noticing that, but that needs to be a broader discussion that we can't have in a short term period when we want to have this turned back on, because it is impacting things. Right now, the only option to really let people know about something is to call, and that's not always the most efficient way, and it's also, a lot of people are not necessarily comfortable sharing information that way, or, and we've gotten in feedback back that people say, I actually don't, I'm, I forget, you know, it's just a quick thing. I see a pothole, I like to notice it. There's a, a shift in the sidewalk that I just would like to get fixed, and I forget to notice it in see click fix. They're not looking to have a legal notice put into court council's office. They're just saying, hey, there's a little thing right here, and it would be cool if it was fixed. That's the purpose of see click fix. Differentiating those two things makes sense from a liability perspective, and it also makes sense, um, from a just ease of working perspective when it comes to getting the information so that we can have our departments operate on it. Um, again, happily, we'll be having a broader conversation about including other methods for that official legal notice, but we need to separate the concept of legal notice and letting departments get the heads up on something so they can go fix it. Um, also very happy to talk about efficiency and all sorts of things. I think that those are great conversations to have. Um, and road striping, that's been brought up to me over and over again. Love to see more of it, but right now, we need to do all we can to get this very useful tool turned back as soon as possible, turned back on as soon as possible. Thank you.
Ms. Moreau.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I'm really happy to vote yes on this piece of legislation today, and, um, in response to the precedent sent by the Court of Appeals, uh, it's obvious that the mayor had to make the decision to temporarily turn off the, um, see click fix application, and it was our job as legislators to make this decision to change the law to allow for us to turn this back on. It doesn't mean that we can't make modi, that this body cannot make modifications to the law to allow for ease of legal notice, to allow for additional modifications of legal notice in the future that will allow for additional accessibility measures. Um, but the purpose of this legislation tonight allows for see click fix to be turned back on, and that's why I'm supporting it. See click fix as an application is a transparency measure. See click fix as an application is one that allows for people in real time to report, um, photographs and commentary about what's happening in the real world. That's a really beautiful and effective measure. Yes, as the majority leader mentioned, there is some unfortunate, uh, muddiness occasionally in the application, but in the times that there is effective and real and, um, uh, uh, real, uh, complaints that are being made to the departments, that's very effective for our city. And as mentioned, it's a transparency measure that should be accessible for our constituents. And so for that reason, we are making that, we're passing this legislation tonight, hopefully passing this legislation tonight, in order to turn it back on, and a no vote tonight means that you do not want your constituents to have access to this transparency measure. So a no vote tonight on this legislation means that you do not want to vote in favor of transparency and that you're not interested in allowing for your constituents to have access to transparency and access to see click fix, which is a transparency measure. And I feel very strongly about that, because we don't have the transparency right now. I've had an absolutely exorbitant amount of constituent contact since the last, since the Court of Appeals decision came out, where people are frustrated with the way that they're able to call the city to report a complaint. That's not right. That's not, and, and it's actually baffling to me that other municipalities don't have see click fix. I don't know how they report code violations or, or potholes or things, if they don't have this application. I don't know how they do it. Um, so I will be voting yes on this legislation. I look forward to working with the council next year to see what gets done and what increased accessibility measures can be done, but I have to, I feel compelled to vote yes because of this transparency measure, because see click fix is so important to our constituents, and because a no vote would mean we do not have access to this transparency, uh, methodology for our constituents. So I will be voting yes, and I urge everyone else to be careful.
Jordan.
Thank you. I want to thank my constituent Tom Moore for coming down in this cold weather, speaking on behalf of this. I also want to thank Ed Brennan, uh, for sending us an email about it. So when, uh, Mr. Robinson speaks, not listening to our constituents, I got, I was at Spanish the other night, and I got like five or six people asking me to vote in favor, so I'm surprised you laughed, I was going to tell them. But, um, as the chair of the DGS committee, I will say this, I get a, I get an email of every see click fix in the City of Albany, and I get a hundred, two hundred a day, and I look at them like, uh, Councilmember Keegan said, yeah, they're good, they're good for us. I, I just, I bring them to the commissioner or who I feel needs to be done, but, uh, I just want to say, I know it's not a perfect, we all agree that it's got to be changed, so hopefully moving forward next year, we can have a DGS committee meeting with see click and, uh, fix the issues that we have. Thank you.
John?
Thank you. So I'm glad the word transparency was used, because, um, with this administration, transparency has been a question, and, you know, as my, as my own experience as an employee, um, I filed a, I was suspended for two weeks, I filed a, a pill, I won my appeal. It was July, I started, um, voicing my concerns, and I was able to argue down counsel to find out that, um, the notice was given to the city in April, I think it was April twenty-fifth. So when we speak about transparency, that's where my concern is, is that we're putting too much power in the mayor's office and dealing with the, the power that they already have that they're not taking advantage of. If we have a system that is allowing, um, people to communicate with departments, there's an opportunity for, um- an opportunity for, um, resolution to the concerns, right? And, um, the problem is that I've sat in this seat and I've listened to people from all wars come down here and complain about how they watch C Click Fix and the issues. So we're not, um, the debate isn't that it's not perfect, the debate is the first time that accountability has been enforced, our knee jerk reaction is to say, oh, we're protecting the, the, um, citizens and we're really not protecting the citizens because it's a lot of situations that people just incur and they don't even report it. They don't attempt to, um, report it because no one has been successful in holding the city alive, liable for this. And, and so I will not be supporting this and, um, what, what I would love to see from the mayor's office and hopefully from the next mayor, um, coming forward is that when we get to this situation, we don't do a knee jerk reaction to say, oh, oh, we're, we're protecting the, um, citizens because we're not protecting the citizens if there are constant situations where the city is liable. You know, um, I'm just interested to see what other cities that use C Click Fix have done, if they, um, encountered the same thing. I wonder if that, if they took this position and I, I heard no, um, mention of it, of what other, um, cities did. And so it makes me feel like they didn't do what we're doing. And, um, um, I just wish that our thoughts, um, stayed with the people that put us in position to sit in this seat because a lot of times when I leave here at night, I don't feel like we made the best decision for the residents. And I, you know, what I said is people get in here or get involved in different endeavors and they start protecting the institution. And that's where we, that's where we're at in the current day where when you ride around this city, yes, there, we live in the Northeast and yes, there're going to be bumps and yes, there're more in, um, certain areas than they are in others and we can't argue that. And, and the fact that the people in the certain areas aren't livid about what's going on, it has allowed this city to get comfortable and, and, uh, you know, let it, uh, um, expand. So, um, I will not be supporting this. Um, I am in, uh, favor of C Click Fix, but I don't feel that, um, I don't live by the threat of lawsuits. If I did that, I probably wouldn't take, um, um, some of the positions that, that I take because the, the people's voice need to be heard at all times. Thank you.
Ms. Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, so two things, I think if we, very clear, if we want C Click Fix back, then we have to take this, this vote today. C Click Fix is a tool that people use, that people have found as a way to be, communicate with us issues quickly. It's moving us forward in the right direction. It's not perfect, but it's moving us forward in the right direction. I'm actually old school compared to probably some of the people that use C Click Fix. I like to make phone calls. I like to, to send emails. So I, I don't, I'm not a C Click Fix, um, massive user. I still use the old school and that's okay. That's okay. We still have that, but to not have this tool for residents that do use it, that do take advantage of it, um, is a disservice. I also disagree with the comment that was made that we don't always disagree with this man. We have vetoed seven overrides from this man, from the administration. We did one just last week. So there are times when we disagree with the administration and, and we make that, that those differences clear and there's nothing wrong with that. That's how government works. You have separate branches, you have differences in policy. That's good government. So here we have something where I think most of us can agree, C Click Fix is something our residents want to see back up and running. And by voting on this today, we can get this back up and running as quickly as possible. Do I think we need to work more on the ways to legally notify the city? Yes, I do. Uh, I do think we need to work at how we can create an email or digital manner for people to legally make notices, but that wasn't C Click Fix. That wasn't the purpose for C Click Fix and that's not the purpose that we're looking to have C Click Fix filled. If that's the purpose we want to see filled, we need to create that purpose. And if the state law would be changed, well, we're lucky we have one of our colleagues going, going there next month. So, um, I will be supporting this. I don't, I don't think, um, C Click Fix is perfect. I don't think it's a perfect tool, but it is a strong tool that many of our residents use and I don't want to see that tool taken away. Thank you.
Ms. Dorr.
Ballerin. Yes. Clark. Yes. Farrell. Yes. Lynn. Yes. Frederick. Yes. Ollie.
Yes.
Johnson.
No.
Keegan. Yes. Kimbrough.
Yes.
Romero. Yes, co-sponsor piece. Zamer. Yes. Eleven, any affirmative? One no.
Local law passes. Passes, Mr. Kimbrough.
Motion to adjourn.
Your second?
Second.
All over the favor.
Aye.
Mean adjourn.